The Village Board Meeting to Order. This is the regular Board Meeting of June 25, 2020. The time is now officially 7:05. Thank you all for joining us, and I would ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Gust, he's absent.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Right here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Addison?
Here.
Trustee Sittick?
Here.
Trustee Wells is absent. Attorney Farullo?
Here.
Mayor Hucker?
Here.
And Clerk McDonald is present.
All right. If you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands?
One nation.
Under God.
Undivisible.
Divisible.
Of liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all. For all.
That's the one time that the delay actually shows through.
Yep. Perfect. All right. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 11, which was held similarly as a Zoom meeting. You have the minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to be considered as the minutes are presented? There being none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve, Miller.
And we had, I actually had Trustee Addison beat you to it. Would you like to second that?
Oh, second, okay.
There you go.
Second by Trustee Miller. Discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no items of special business on the agenda tonight. This would be, next would be item five, the public comment on agenda items. It's the first opportunity for any member of the public in person or on the Zoom call to address the Board on any agenda items. Does anyone have anyone to discuss, anything to discuss?
Do we have to do the bills?
Yeah, we did do the warrants.
Oh, you know, we probably should pay the bills. All right. What I just said, pretend I see it in a couple of minutes. We do have, sorry about that. Approval of the warrants list, bills presented for payment, the amount of $101,198.85. Is there a motion?
I would give you that motion, Mayor.
Second, Miller.
Motion by Trustee Johnson, second by Trustee Miller. Any discussion on the bills? All right. There being none, roll call, please.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Now's the time for any public to comment on agenda items. David, anything?
I have seen the comments.
Okay. You know, you raise a good point. We haven't had anybody here in so long that the only things on the agenda coming up are approval of the salt purchases, approval of a vehicle purchase, and we had the
Sidewalk replacement.
Sidewalk repairs contract. So we'll have another opportunity later on. We don't have any members of public that'd be, that appear to be on the screen. Are we seeing everybody that's on, at this point, on the screens?
Yes, full house.
Full, okay. That's everybody. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Whoa.
Very good. Then Mayor's Report. Nothing terribly significant. We know we had some excitement a while back on some shots fired out on Green Bay Road. Haven't heard much since the original press release, so we'll wait to see what comes forward out of that investigation. That was about it on my agenda. We'll move on to trustee reports. Trustee Johnson, have you got anything for us tonight?
I have one official item and a couple of unofficial ones. Our next finance committee meeting is the Ides of July, July 15, 6:00 p.m., virtual meeting. We'll go over in excruciating detail that warrant list that we just approved. Peggy's smiling. The other two items I just want to comment on, I'm pleased to see the, the speed sign on Sheridan Road has been there for a week or so, and I'm anxious to hear what, what the results are. I do notice that as you approach it in the evening, my evening commute, the knuckleheads that generally whiz by me immediately slow down. They must have radar detectors in their cars. And the other item I just wanted to bring up is several of my neighbors I'm seeing on Facebook and next door are complaining about, and apparently are complaining to the police department as well, about illegal fireworks in our area. It seems like every night, and loud ones, the loud bomb type ones, not just little lady finger firecrackers. And I don't know, I mean, policing that's almost impossible unless you fly a drone over and watch for flashes. But it is annoying some of the folks, especially those with dogs. And interestingly, I just saw on the news that Chicago has gone from 800 this time last year to over 7,000 complaints of illegal fireworks. So apparently it's a, it's another epidemic that's sweeping the area. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
It is 2020 after all.
That's right.
I would, I would say for sure that I would join in that and echo those sentiments about the fireworks. There are some incredibly loud ones going off in the area, and it's very difficult to pinpoint them, very difficult to pinpoint them.
We'll, we'll find the perpetrator when they lose a hand.
When the what?
When they lose a hand, we'll find them.
Yeah, right?
Right. Yes.
I think a drone is probably a bad idea because they would just shoot it out of the skies.
That's a good point.
Well, and this close to the airport, too, that's always an issue.
Good point. All right. Trustee Miller?
Well, the sheriff's office should be able to pinpoint on some of these complaints, and they can figure out where it's coming from to let us know.
Yep. There, we're, we are definitely encouraging people to call the sheriff's department, so.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right. Trustee Miller, what have you got tonight?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment about the village's speed sign has been on my street for the last almost two weeks, so I'm not sure whose sign is on Sheridan Road. Do we know?
Oh, that's not ours?
It's the county's.
The county put one up there, so we've got two going.
The county.
Yep.
Which one's on Sheridan Road?
It's the county's, the county's sign out there.
Oh, well, I hope we can get the data from it. I'm curious.
Yeah, we had ours on Beach Road both directions for a while, and now it's on paddock, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, paddock.
I'll be darned. Somebody at County's been listening to our squawking there. Great.
That is good. The neighbors were happy to see it. They thought it was because of speeding, but I understand it's more to do a traffic count for the upcoming paving project. But it's accomplishing two things at one time, which is great.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, David, you were saying?
I did ask the Lake County Sheriff, the district's, the sheriff's, especially the agent, to ask them. They, because we've got the live stream at McDonald's, and it's kind of like started in at about 5:00.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
We can't hear Mark.
I know, he doesn't have a microphone. I'm sorry. David, David O'Rear's in the audience, and he's just commenting on the sheriff's office, some conversations he's had with the sheriff's department about the speeding on Sheridan Road as well, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Apologies, we're not fully set up for visitors, and David came tonight, and we're just are kind of, we gotta get back in the groove of people showing up again, especially starting tomorrow, so we'll have to see where that leads us, so.
Yeah, I have a hard time hearing Mr. Huber as well and anything else that was being said in the background.
Okay. Mark, Mr. Huber wasn't actually speaking, that was David O'Rear. He's, he's about
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's about 20 feet from the nearest microphone, so. But, all right, well, we'll move on then to Trustee Addison.
I will save my report for the ordinance and resolution section.
All right. And Trustee Sittick?
And everybody talked about what I was going to bring up, so no report from me. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
Very good. And Trustee Wells, of course, is not here. Item eight then is our village administrator's report. Mark, what have you got for us?
Couple of things if I could, Mayor. Just a reminder and announcement to those that are watching us in our livestream out there, and the public, we've got our new community development director, Mr. Andrew Jennings, will be starting Monday. He's a former community development director at Wheeling, so we're looking forward to having a little help in that regard. Just remind everybody also, we've got the cleanup Saturday east of Lewis. The thing was pretty successful. Adrian didn't have any problems with the collection last Saturday, and the shredding event is this Saturday also, 1:30 to 3:30. So, and to your comments, the Board's comments on traffic enforcement, we have requested those from the sheriff, to additional enforcement based on both the speed sign at Beach, the continuing problems on Sheridan Road, and a couple other locations, too, that I won't give away to the public at this point, but you'll see some upcoming enforcement by the sheriff's office as soon as we get notified. When that's going to be, I'll let you know, too, so.
Very good.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two items on the agenda tonight. Finance report, May of 2020, and the public safety report, also May of 2020. Do we have a motion to approve the report?
I'll give you that motion, Mayor.
Second, Miller.
We have a motion by Jensen, second by Miller. Any discussion?
Just a brief note on the finance report, you'll note that, that the last finance committee meeting, we received projection of impact of the COVID epidemic on our finances, and it's really still too early to tell, especially early in the fiscal year. So as, as the year progresses, we'll, we'll have better, kind of like projecting infections, as year progresses, we'll have better projections and, and get a better idea of what our future prospects as far as income impact. We know it's going to go down, we just don't know how much.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comment before we vote? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries. For the sake of my sanity, if the clerk could let me know what the next resolution number will be?
It's 20.
And I will then turn the microphone over to the illustrious Trustee Addison for his public work show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first two items will be taken separately, but just a brief description, every year when we prepare for, I know it's hard to think about right now, but when we prepare for the upcoming winter, there is a state bid that we latch on to for salt purchase. We've always made it a practice to have two sources for salt, because in the past there has been problems with one vendor being unavailable due to ice buildup on the Mississippi River or whatever it is that takes place, so we always have two, two options to purchase from. The two resolutions tonight, you'll notice that the, the dollar amounts are a little different by about $20 a ton, but both of them have an up to amount when it comes to tonnage that we're going to purchase. We will be making every attempt to purchase the majority of the salt at the lower price, but we do need to purchase some at the higher price, but the, we're not locked into those full amounts, it just says up to those amounts, what would be available to us, I believe, is, is that correct, your description? Okay. So the first one, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing purchase of up to 1,080 tons of rock salt at $81.15 per ton from Compass Mineral America, Inc.
Second, Miller.
Okay. All right.
I don't need to read the rest of it, right?
No, you're, you're fine. We have a motion by Trustee Addison, second by Trustee Miller. Discussion? All right. There being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second one is described a lot like the first one, but this resolution will be authorizing purchase of up to 720 tons of salt at $66.06 from Morton's Salt Incorporated in Chicago, Illinois.
We have a motion from Trustee Addison?
Second, Miller.
Second from Trustee Miller. Discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you. Third item is for an annual program for sidewalk and curb repair. The majority of the village does not have sidewalks and curbs, so the majority of this work will be done in the Heatherstone subdivision, but as I turn to page 51, as my note says, there is also some work that will be done on Oak Forest near Marguerite, because there is curb and gutter over there. So the, now I lost my place. This is the wrong one. Standby. Okay, this is with Chen's Concrete Incorporated. We received two bids. They were the lowest bidder. The village staff recommended approving. They've worked with them in the past, and things have gone well, so I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Chen's Concrete for the sidewalk replacement program in an amount not to exceed $12,500.
Second, Miller.
Motion, Trustee Addison, second, Trustee Miller. Discussion?
First.
All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item will be a vehicle, a dump truck, plow truck that we budgeted for. This is coming through the Sourcewell Program, which is the bidding, the statewide bidding process, so that has been taken care of. This is formerly known as the National Joint Purchasing Association, but now it's called Sourcewell, so they are required to give us the lowest price on the vehicle when we bid it out. We had budgeted $190,000 for this purchase. The price came in at $175,279. So I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing purchase of the 2020 Peterbilt 348 with plow and spreader from JX Truck Center in Wadsworth, Illinois.
Second, Miller.
We have a motion by Trustee Addison, second by Trustee Miller. Discussion?
Just the one thing to note, the vehicle that it's replacing, I believe, is a, what year was it?
2000.
Okay, it's a 2000 vehicle, and it will be, we'll be listing it under surplus items and attempting to sell it or something along those lines to recoup some of our money.
Very good. All right. Then have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sittick?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. You're all done?
Thank you.
All right. I have no unfinished business items on the agenda. Are there any new business items for the Board to consider tonight? There being none, now would be the time for citizens wishing to address the Board to rise, and we have to get your microphone, David, if you want to talk.
He's got one on the desk over there.
Yeah.
If I had a big mirror, I could point the camera towards Dave, and then.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
David O'Rear, 9872 West Marguerite Lane, Beach Park, Illinois. Couple issues. I've got some neighbors on Oak Forest that have been complaining about the condition of their street, especially the east end of Oak Forest is really in bad shape, and the exit from, on and off Sheridan Road could use some more. The next one is the consideration for some parking control on Oak Forest, especially on Friday night, it's down to one lane traffic because of the parking. You've got the duplexes there, and they've got five, six, some seven cars parked there already, and so if they have any company at all, the street's blocked, so that is coming from the neighbor across the street who's been blocked in several times by that. The real question for me is the two abandoned, not abandoned homes, but two homes that are vacant on Marguerite Lane. I'd like to, I'd like to know if there's some way we're going to get a firm date, is the one that's going to be taken down, and what we plan to do with it?
Sure.
Because I think what's going to happen is the homeless are going to find that, and we end up with new neighbors up there, and I, I don't think that's in the best interest of, of our community and the village, so.
Yeah. What I can tell you is the stormwater management is in, kind of in control of that project. We are in communications with them. I don't believe we have a demolition date set yet.
Not yet, Mayor.
And we're, we're certainly trying to stay on top of that because of the obvious reasons. We don't want to have, after all the work we went through to get this done, we don't want to have those houses end up in the ravine, never mind have other problems as a result of them being vacant. Ultimately, once the, the project is done, the banks are stabilized, the grading is finished, and, you know, the vegetation has grown, the village will end up owning that property and doing maintenance on the property going forward, so those two lots will remain vacant. In fact, development on those lots are prohibited through the FEMA grant, so they'll end up being a little green space there, it's gonna have a little maintenance to be, to be taken care of, but that's the ultimate end to it, so.
Thank you. I could answer some questions to my neighbors that are very, very concerned about that.
Certainly understand.
One other thing, Mayor. The, I guess we would all know it as Nationwide Electronics Building. It's easier giving you the address because everybody knows what it is.
Yep.
I moved in there about 33, 34 years ago, and I used to complain, not complain, because we were just unincorporated Beach Park, you know, so we had to put up with it. I complained with all the trucks in there having their CBs, it was just, they were doing business. Now we've got a situation there that, you know, 33, 34 years ago, when I bought the lot there and built a home, I, I had one real concern, Beach Park. My concern was the fact that the manufactured homes would maintain the level that they were at, at that time, which in the most part, I think they have done a great job. But I sat there with that building now, windows boarded up, they have been keeping it somewhat mowed, but I, I'm begging the village to either try to paint, paint it so it matches the building, do something, because I've had two neighbors that are very upset.
Yep.
I'm upset, I don't like it. I take pride in my property, and I take pride in my block.
Yep.
Because I'm the neighbor, I'll be the first neighbor to complain.
Just had this conversation with our administrator today, as a matter of fact, we were discussing that very building. We've had multiple break-ins into the building. Apparently, the inside of it is featuring some very creative artwork now, so we know that we've had area kids that have been vandalizing, breaking windows, gaining access. That's why the, why it's completely boarded up now, and we have been in, in regular negotiations and discussions with the property owners, and we may be getting closer to a solution. Very difficult situation, because they've been trying to rent it out, they've been trying to get somebody in there, and of course, the site is awkward, parking, parking is limited for some of the uses, so, yes, this is very much on our radar, and it is a big concern, especially when, when we became aware of people that were breaking in and spending time in there, because that's not good at all, so.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons that I am concerned about the same thing happening with the two homes that are up there.
Yep.
And I, one other comment, and I'll sit down and shut up. I have several times contacted the community service about the petite motors down there, the way they park. They've got that lot completely full. If we ever have a fire in that building, heaven forbid, with the manufactured homes right in back of it, I mean, it seems like they go in, they get it straightened out, and two weeks later, we're right back to the same way. So I would, for safety reasons alone, we need to get, I would ask that we get something done down there.
Okay.
I thank you for the time and for the listening, and the answers that I did get, I appreciate that.
Well, thanks for coming. I got to tell you, it's been, it's been a lonely place. Typically, there's three of us in this room. It's been going on for months now, and it's kind of nice to see a fresh face, so thanks for coming, David.
Thank you.
You bet.
Dave, about the Oak, the Oak Forest thing, too. Adrian, can, could you look, I know on Marguerite recently, we put a new sign out reminding about the parking ordinance on one side of the road only, because we had the same issue. So there's a new sign, right when you turn off Oak Forest onto the first Marguerite, and I know the sheriff's department was doing some enforcement and issuing some tickets on Marguerite, so can we look into, if it matches, maybe get a sign up on Oak Forest and do some enforcement over there to keep that from happening? Because I agree, when the cars park across from each other, nothing of size
That's a problem.
can get down in between. So I think it's improved on Marguerite towards the east end, so we need to carry that on to Oak Forest.
Okay.
Most of the things that I've talked to, that brought to the attention, I would say 99% have been addressed.
Yep.
We've talked about it.
It's our goal, and sometimes people see, when you live in the neighborhood, you see things differently than the people that are just driving through once or twice a day, or once or twice a week for that matter, so it's very important that, that you're raising the issues as well, so I appreciate it. All right.
I have a question, Mayor. Mayor, you said something about that building is, the owner is trying to rent it?
That's the, the old Nationwide building?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That, the, they've had multiple tenants interested over the years that a previous administrator had worked with. Any kind of a use like a restaurant or, or any type of retail use that's going to have a lot of activity, they're woefully short of parking, and we end up with variances and, you know, trying to get things shoehorned in. The building is a little bit too big, and the parking lot's a little bit too small, so we're working, again, hopefully to maybe some solution there, but we're, it's very early on, so we're, we're in discussions trying to work out a solution.
But I guess my real question is, if the owner is a local person, which last I heard that was the case?
Yes.
Would that owner not be required to maintain the building in a fashion other than just having it all boarded up?
Well, certainly, and that's part of why we're having these discussions, and, and that's kind of what we're working towards is, you know, we got to go one direction or another here, and, you know, I'm not, I don't really have the ability to say a whole lot more at this point, but
Okay.
suffice to say, as soon as we can discuss more of these things, we certainly will. It's just an awkward property that doesn't really comply with, with anything at this point, so.
Right. Exactly. And I was, I was going to follow up on that as well, because I know the property wasn't up to standard, up to code, anything like that. The building itself wasn't bad, but the parking situation is very minimal.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to follow up on another of Mr. O'Rear's comments, if I may.
Certainly.
The, the SMC topic that he raised, in the recent administrator's report, I see The SMC topic that he raised, in the recent administrator's report, I see that SMC's thrown us a curve on the Casey's property, which is pretty disappointing, that especially in light of the fact that we've been working so closely with them on the on the Bull Creek project, and also on this landslide project. Do we have any update on that, and what's the outcome?
We do, actually. Casey's very quickly came up with an alternate proposal. What basically transpired is, and I've become more of a wetlands expert than I would care to admit, but SMC, doing some of the field superv, field work out there and reviewing plans and the like, identified a, not only a wetland area, but a high-quality wetland area that was going to be crossed by some of the drainage from Casey's. So Casey's has come up in an alternate direction. We've engaged our engineer, and the engineer is happy so far with the plan, so basically where we're going is to take that drainage a little bit farther down Paxton and connect to an existing drain line, and disperse the water that way, rather than having it go straight across the village property, so.
Well, it's kind of disappointing this came up so late in the game, I'm glad it was resolved.
Certainly, yeah, I think, I think we've got a good solution. The same old story, you just can't, you just can't win sometimes when you're trying to get something done, so. All right.
Sounds like Don might be babysitting.
I have company tonight, yeah, a couple little beasties.
Yeah, the beasties.
Okay, well, you got to mute them.
They were outside with, they were outside with Grandma, I don't know, maybe the mosquitoes started to get them. Future public service.
There you go. All right, well, I was just checking to see if we had any other citizens, it does not appear that we do, unless Ginny has something to tell us tonight. She's shaking her head no, okay. Well, then, on that note.
Mayor, Matthew Malina and I would like to offer a motion to adjourn.
Well, I was just going to say we don't have cause for executive session, so trustee Jensen offered a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second by Sidick.
All right, now, I'm going to try to say this in honor of Mayor Milt. Every time that he would call the roll, he would say, eyes to eyes, nays to nays, the clerk to call the roll.
He got that from Bruce, Wellington Bruce Dunbar.
There you go, there you go. Well, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Sidick?
Aye.
Motion carries, we adjourn, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.